This is our community's house. We are all guests in it here to serve our community. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and so the pleasure falls to me to welcome you all here to our regular meeting of council for February 11th at five o'clock. Actually, it's a special meeting of council. Just before we get going, would like to start with land acknowledging, councillor Hanson has offered to start us off.
We respectfully acknowledge the original peoples of these lands and waters, specifically the Slave with Tooth, Squamish, and Muskweamun, whose unceded ancestral lands the District of North Vancouver is located. We value the opportunity to learn, share, and serve our communities on these unceded lands.
Thank you councillor. Right, council. We have an agenda that's been circulated. Are there any errors or omissions from the agenda as presented? I would like to propose a couple of quick changes. We have quite a few people assembled for items 4.2 and 4.4. Wondering if I can move those to the front of the meeting. And so 4.2, then 4.4, and then we'll carry on with 4.1 and 4.3. Move by councillor Murray, second by councillor Back, prepared to call a question, all in favour, contrary minded, motion is carried. Council, we have quite a few meeting minutes that have been circulated with the package. These are for November 4th, November 25th, December 2nd, and December 9th. Are there any errors or omissions from those meeting minutes as presented? Hearing none. Will somebody please move? Move by councillor Murray. Is there a second around the matter? Second by councillor Back, prepared to call the question, all in favour, contrary minded, motion is carried, those items are adopted. But just before we get going, I was just going to say a couple of comments at the front end here. So this is called a special meeting of council, and the only thing that really makes it special in our agenda, besides the presence of everybody here, is that it wasn't in our original calendar for the year. So we ended up adding this meeting, which means it's a special, not a regular. And the reason for that was we had a snow interruption that caused us to have to reschedule this meeting. So for all intents and purposes, this, we're going to treat this as though it's a regular meeting of council. So it's going to have a public input period at the front end, and then it's going to proceed into the reports as we progress along this evening. But did just want to explain sort of that difference, if you were wondering why we call it a special. So at this point, we do reserve a period of up to 30 minutes of time at the front end of any regular meeting of council for input from the public. These are opportunities for members of the public to raise issues of concern, and they have three minutes to make their comments. We did circulate a list preceding the last meeting, and we've carried it forward to the clerks department. So I do have a number of people who have signed up to speak to agenda items this evening. And so I'm going to start with the list there. When we get to the end, if we still have time, we'll see if anyone else would like to add their name. The first speaker I have signed up is Tara or Tara King.
How is that possible? Do I go sit here?
Please, welcome. We're going to turn a microphone on in front of you there, and when you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Am I comfortable? I'll probably get a bit nervous, but okay. Hi, I'm Tara King. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak with you today. I wrote my notes, just so I didn't miss anything. I am a parent volunteer at Cleveland Elementary, where I'm part of the traffic safety patrol team. This is my second year volunteering for the afternoon shift alongside two other women, one who does the morning shift, and the other who does both morning and afternoon. And the three of us do this every single day. We are the core of the traffic safety program. Managing traffic has become increasingly difficult over the last few years. In January alone, we helped calm two children who were almost hit by cars, often by reversing cars legally. And I understand that a child was also hit at Larson Elementary in January. It's not just the preponderance of illegal or unethical driving that makes the job difficult, or the endless amount of parking violations, including people using the accessible parking spots. We only have two when we have fewer than we need, which is probably at least six for the families that need them. The work itself is extremely demoralizing. We are parents with no power, and we are almost entirely women, which means we are routinely yelled at and dismissed. Behavior that only momentarily improves when there is police or bylaw presence. And as much as we love our bylaw officer, and we really do, she's amazing, she cannot be there every day. I've done this for a year and a half because I believe in the importance of keeping our kids safe, but also in providing a warm and well, a warm welcome when families arrive at and leave the school. But I am done after this year. I need a break from the emotional labour that is caused by a few dangerous and bad actors. We will also be losing the other two volunteers who come every single day, and there is no one stepping forward to replace us. The demographics of North Vancouver have shifted. There is a crisis in volunteerism everywhere. Most two-parent households need two incomes to make ends meet, and we can no longer rely on the unpaid labour of women for this work. We do not have the human power to solve this problem with volunteers, which means that our children will be increasingly at risk. As you debate, debate, councillor Jordan Back's motion, consider the safety and emotional wellbeing of our kids and our school communities. I really believe that we need paid crossing guards, preferably with more power than we have had to help us, and I urge you to support the motion. And if anybody here wants to know more about what it's like on the ground in an elementary school, you are always welcome to visit us at Cleveland. Our PAC chair there has said the same thing. We would love to have you and love to show you what it's like. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, Tara King. Next speaker I have is Rob Dale, followed by Greg Robbins. And I should mention that tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting, meaning members of the council, the staff, the public could participate virtually or in person. So if I don't see a person stand up, I'm going to look to the virtual list of people and see if there are any virtual participants. But Rob Dale is joining us here in person. So when you're comfortable, welcome. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mayor Little, and council members. I have a similar story. I'm a parent and the traffic coordinator at Mount Roa School. A year and a half ago, our vice principal, Carrie Snell, became so concerned about the traffic situation in front of our school that she spent two weeks standing in front of our school trying to direct traffic. This came about because she saw, she witnessed three near misses in front of our school in a matter of a week. Within those two weeks, she suffered insults and abuse and threats. At that point, I stepped in, and I've got a construction background. So I decided to try to monitor traffic. We, along with the PAC, came up with a traffic safety plan. We engaged the district bylaw safety and the RCMP. They were very helpful while they're there. We changed the signage in front of the school to encourage parents to not stop in certain areas. And we put together a drop-off area, which we have to set up and take down every week. We also have no other volunteers. The majority of days in the last 18 months, I've been the only person standing in front of the school. And we have three to four significant incidents per drop-off and pickup. So it's not a matter of whether something's going to happen, it's a matter of when something's going to happen. I've seen several children almost hit by cars. One of them came within about an inch of being run over. We have some parents who simply think, well, I'll just do it once or twice. You know, I'll pull into an area, I'll block off a driveway, I'll literally park in the middle of the street and tell my kindergarten kid to run across two lanes of traffic to get to school on time. We also have a group of parents who every single day will break the rules, whether they're speeding, whether they're doing U-turns in front of the school, whether they decide to park illegally, stop in no-stopping areas. And all of these things create chaos and hazard in front of the school. So I think it's really important that our schools have a traffic safety plan. And in a lot of those cases, I think having a crossing guard is extremely important. I think that creating coordination with the bylaws and RCMP to encourage enforcement, where we're actually ticketing parents, we're not actually standing there with a whole bunch of RCMP officers in safety vests and handing out warnings. I think we, who are standing there in front of the school every day, we give out warnings, we talk to these parents. And I think we need to have enforcement. I think that's the only thing that's going to change people's behaviour. So I absolutely encourage people to support this proposal. And I think that it's really important for our students and for the children of the schools to feel safe and be able to get to and from school safely. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rob Dale. Next speaker I have is Greg Robbins. Greg, joining us virtually. I don't see a name that reflects Greg. Okay. Next speaker I have is Anna Morrison, joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
I'm the Chair of the PAC at Sherwood Park Elementary, and I wanted to add my voice to this discussion. The two previous speakers did an excellent job of explaining where we're at with traffic safety in front of elementary schools in the district. I personally have been a parent at our school for almost a decade, for nine years. And so I can attest that schools are doing everything they can, and they have been, to try to address this. PACs have been trying, administration have been trying, using all the tools that were mentioned, bylaw enforcement, signage, parent volunteers. And all of these things have just a momentary blip of effectiveness. And what I really see in councillor Back's proposal is the potential for lasting, meaningful change. By taking this out of the volunteer sphere, making it a paid position, that's there day in, day out, we could actually make meaningful arrows in protecting our children. And the only real downside I can see is that trying to choose who would be part of this pilot program. I think every single elementary school would be clamoring to be part of this first year. I don't know how you'll, I don't know how you'll pick if it goes ahead, but we all really desperately want this. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Anna Morrison. The next speaker I have is Laura Jamison, joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
Members of the council, my name is Laura Jamison. I am the Ross Road PAC Chair. Since my eldest child began attending Rosswood Elementary School seven years ago, I have been frustrated by our traffic situation. When I became first Vice Chair, and now the Chair of the Ross Road PAC, that frustration only grew. Our public schools are funded by the government and the taxes of our citizens. Why are there no paid crossing guards keeping our children safe? We rely heavily on the good-natured and community-driven parents who have come here tonight to step up and volunteer as crossing guards, but that is becoming increasingly unattainable. In this economy, many parents have to work full-time, or they have young children who cannot be left unattended, or children who have special needs that require that attention. Our parents are stretched to the absolute maximum. A paid crossing guard at every elementary school is not a big ask. Every week I receive reports of parents almost hitting students as they speed down our narrow street, or speak rudely to the few volunteers that we do have, and make no mistake, we do not have crossing guards every single day of the week. These other schools are very fortunate. On the days we do not have a volunteer crossing guard, it is chaos. Parents double parking, zipping into the no-stopping areas to drop off their child right in front of the school. I personally witnessed a child almost get run over because a parent wanted to grab a parking spot that became available. This is unacceptable. I urge you to accept the proposal put forward by councillor Back. This is a critical need at our school, and no school needs it more than another. Everybody requires it equally. We require crossing guards and safety measures across our schools. You are capable of making the arrival and the departure of our students from school safer. Do your job. To refuse to even try tells every parent how little you value their child's safety. Make this happen.
Thank you for your comments. All right. We still have some more time. Actually, I'm just going to circle back. We missed Greg Robbins. Greg Robbins joined the room or the virtual room here? I don't see a name that reflects Greg Robbins. Okay. All right. So we'll carry on. I see a virtual hand from Corey Cost. Which, sorry, oh, non-agenda item. Sorry, I do have a group of, so I've got four more non-agenda item speakers to go to, and then we'll pick up the virtual attendee Corey Cost after that, and that should round out our input. So the first non-agenda item speaker is Peter Tevan, joining us here in person. Welcome. When you're comfortable, you have three minutes to address the council.
That's going to take a nice wobbly pop and some mood music. Thank you, your worship and council, Peter Tevan, for the record, 1900 block Indian River Crescent. Good evening. I'm going to comment on a matter that I consider to be very serious importance. And I want to preface my comments by stating, these comments are solely my opinion, not an expert in these matters, nor do I have any special inside knowledge. And where I use the word corrupt, please understand that I mean it in the sense of outside of original purpose, not alluding to anything illegal or anything like that. I am worried about both our relationship with and the state of Metro Vancouver, the organisation. We've all seen the revelations of the so-called double-dipping and doubling of salaries of area mayors and council members who benefit from both their taxpayer-funded salaries within their municipalities, and the taxpayer-funded double salaries provided due to the involvement with Metro. It seems abundantly apparent that this causes not only a conflict of interest for those representatives on metro boards and committees, where they don't know who that they are loyal to, the taxpayers of their municipality, or to the financial rewards that they get for being involved with Metro. And those funds and stipends can easily, easily be used to control them, so that they represent not the interests of their residents back in their municipality, but of Metro itself. I don't think it matters which member of council you swap in or out of metro committees, the money will compromise them all. I think the time is right to assess whether the part-time status of councillors in the District of North Vancouver is appropriate for those who are engaged in a full-time capacity, especially within metro boards and committees. And I think the time is right to assess, to reconsider our very involvement with Metro. I would suggest that we either suspend or refuse the extra pay provided for metro engagement, or withdraw from engaging with Metro entirely. Our representatives ought to know clearly who pays them, and therefore who they represent. It seems pretty easy to conclude that Metro is behaving in a very corrupt manner. And it also serves to compromise and coerce anyone who gets involved with them. It's also very clear that Metro and many of the elected officials who form their boards and committees have zero regard and respect for taxpayer dollars as they so lavishly waste that money on benefits, perks, and worse, wholly mismanaged projects such as the North Shore Wastewater Treatment Plan. My purpose in bringing this up is hopefully to start a conversation. I ask for you to band together with our other North Shore municipal neighbours and exit us from Metro itself. This situation with Metro cannot continue as it has been, and it is not, as some would say, being managed and managed well. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Tevan, some very fair points. I did just want to point out one, one piece, though, which is that, as you said, people have the expectation that you work for the municipality when you go to Metro Vancouver. The problem is, that's not the system that they've set up. You actually have to swear an oath to be a member of Metro, and in that oath, you have to commit to represent Metro, and not your host municipality that sent you there.
That's precisely the problem.
So there's a conflict, and it is, it is an intentional conflict, so that when you sit at that regional table, you're supposed to look at things as a region as a whole. And so having your host municipality pay you to be there is actually problematic with the oath that you sign the day you start doing work for Metro.
And that's why.
I don't know if that's helpful or not, but that's, that's actually the requirement of participating in the metro.
Yeah, yeah. And therein is my point. Thank you. I don't have more time.
Next speaker I have is Renee Gorley. I don't, it says virtual, but I actually don't see Renee on my list. Renee Gorley, if you're one of the virtual participants, can you raise your hand, your virtual hand, so that we can move you over? Okay, I'll check back in for Renee at the end of the meeting if we. The next speaker I have is Danielle Maria Dennis, or Denis. Again, this is a virtual participant, and I'm not seeing a name that reflects that. We'll circle back and double-check, but then I have Hazen Colbert, joining us virtually. And I do see your name here, and have moved, offered to move you over his pants. There you are. Okay. Mr. Colbert, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mr. Little. Can you hear me?
Clearly. Welcome. You have three minutes to address the council.
Mayor Little, as I begin to speak tonight, I am speaking from a very detailed script, and I will not be able to see the timer as a result of that. So please let me know when I'm down to 30 seconds. Thank you. I speak this evening as the founder and Chair of North Vancouver Pride. And Pride is an acronym for People Respecting Inclusion, Diversity, and Equity. I am requesting that the DMV establish a Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee. The committee is required to counter the vicious attack on democracy and established human rights under the Canadian Charter and other enactments by Donald Trump, the US Republican Party, Elon Musk, the Conservative Party of Canada, and the BC Conservative Party, particularly John Rustad, who last week threatened our good Dr. Bonnie Henry, resulting in her requiring 24/7 police protection, confirmed to me by the RCMP when I called to submit a complaint about him. The committee will have the power, for instance, but not limited to, recommend widely identified inclusive spaces at all municipal properties, including that all bathrooms at municipal hall and in municipal buildings such as the North Shore Recreation and Community Centres are remade as gender-neutral within the next year, using emergency funding if required. Prohibit the use of municipal properties for hate-mongering, such as prohibiting municipal properties from hosting all candidates' meetings, which may include CPC and BC Conservative Party candidates where evidence of them speaking hatefully exists. Prohibit Tesla vehicles from being operated on or parked on municipal property, including municipal parks, as they are dangerous instrumentalities at risk of spontaneous combustion. Prohibit the municipality from sourcing products and services out of the United States. Establish a subcommittee to look into welcoming refugees from the US and Palestine. A formal statement by the Mayor and council condemning the Israeli genocide in Gaza and the plan by Donald Trump to continue the genocide against the Palestinians through ethnic cleansing, after which the Palestinians will be sold as beachfront properties to the world's oligarchs. Considering, consider prohibiting any signage in the municipality promoting US products, including US-built cars. Consider prohibiting, as allowed by law, or at least regulating, as allowed by law, any local organisation with operations in Israel, including prohibiting signage promoting the purchase of State of Israel bonds and other dodgy financial tools that fund state-sponsored terrorism. Prohibiting the operation of any vehicles with US-licensed plates from operating in the municipality except passing through on Highway 1. Declaring the Freedom Convoy a terrorist organisation? 30 seconds?
20 seconds. There you go.
Given the Conservative Party of Canada yesterday appropriated the Proud Boys motto, "Canada First" is their new slogan. And given that the Proud Boys are labelled a terrorist organisation in Canada, label the Conservative Party of Canada a terrorist organisation, and direct the RCMP to seize the bank accounts of local riding associations unless the local riding association unanimously affirms the commitment to the doctrine of diversity, equity, inclusiveness, and belonging. Thank you, council.
Thank you very much for your comments, Hazen Colbert. Okay, just circling back, has Renee Gorley joined the meeting in any form? How about Danielle Maria Dennis? All right, going to go on to the additional speaker, virtual speaker, Corey Cost, joining us virtually. Corey, can you hear me? You are muted in the Zoom system.
How's that?
There you go.
How's that? Okay.
That's much better. Thank you. I can hear you clearly. Welcome. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, your worship and members of the council. My name is Corey Cost. I live near Edgemont Village, in a fairly modest home, but in a very nice location. And I'd like to address some query in items 4.3, the draft financial plan workbook, in which, looking at page two of that draft, and the actual table in the analysis section, sorry, I didn't present this beforehand. It says that the municipal property tax increase will be about 5.5%, and the average residential home will only pay $152 more. Now, my home is about near the average for these kinds of assessments. And so I tried to do a calculation of just what this means. And if you just plug in a simple equation of 0.55 times some quantity, and it's equal to 152, then the actual amount of property tax that we're talking about is $2,764. And with the increase, it will be $2,900. But let's say about $3,000. And that put up something in my mind, because nowhere near what I pay. It's much closer to my payment of about $9,000 in 2024. So in which case, we're talking about the increase is not just $150, but about three times that, at $466. So I'm puzzled. I need some clarification about that table. Is it really all that we're going to see for the increase in our taxes? Or is this maybe needs some clarification and some details that go along with it? This is only maybe a small part that we're talking about of our taxes? Anyway, I have been unable to contact anybody to answer this question, so I throw it out at Mayor and council for their clarification. As for, since I own a Tesla, might as well comment and speak on the safety record of Teslas, which are at least 10 times safer than ice cars. Now, with the number of fires, number of collisions that they experience, I can substantially more. So I would not classify them amongst the, all the other electric vehicles that are available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Corey Cost. Would anybody else like to address the meeting? We've got two speakers over here. About time for two more. I got time for about two more speakers. They're both crossing guard programme. I'll take the one in the back and one of the two in the front. You can duke it out right here. Come on up. If you could start with your name and approximate address for the record, that'd be appreciated.
Yes, my name's Terry Craig, and I live in the Edgemont Delbrook area, just off of Callwood Drive. My daughter is 10 years old. She goes to Highlands Elementary School. I just want to reiterate and back up the conversation that's been had this evening. I walk my daughter to school every day, four or five times a day, sorry, four to five times a week, sorry. I'm a decent-sized guy, 6'2", 200 pounds. I enter that crosswalk, and people target me. They go after, you know, there is, there is, coming through Thorncliff, where we don't have the flashing light. The flashing light is just down the road here off of Queen's on Callwood Drive. Not many of the kids actually use the flashing light, if they do. There are still people just flying through there. Everybody's late for work, you know, flying through the intersection. Even the flashing crosswalk is just as equally dangerous. We alternate back and forth depending on the time of the day of coming back from school. So even the mechanical-operated flashlight does not protect, you know, kids and adults walking through the intersection. My daughter's, you know, 10 years old, going on 11 years old. She should be able to walk to school by herself. We're literally two and a half minutes away, probably, you know, 400, 500 yards away from the actual school. I will not let her cross that crosswalk without me holding her hand both ways, back and forth, because it's just, you know, like I said, I'm two times the size of her, three times the size of her. And on a regular basis, I nearly get clipped coming out of there every single time. So I just wanted to reiterate Jordan Back's, you know, proposal here for a manned, or woman, I should say, intersection by crossing guards to help us out in all school districts. I think you've heard from four or five school districts here. And I just wanted to say that we support it. I've come with two other dads that we walk our kids to school every single day from the exact same neighbourhood. We're here to support the project, and just wanted to mention that. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. And the last speaker, welcome. If you could start with your name and approximate address for the record that would assist us.
Skaters, yeah. Mike Tencredi, Upper Longsdale, North Vancouver here. So as you guys may recognize us. So as you guys may recognize us from about a year ago, we had the opportunity to speak with you in December of twenty twenty-three, if I got that right. So in the meantime, we've remained committed to our primary goal, which is securing a permanent covered facility for skateboarding on the North Shore. While continuing to post for this long-term vision, we have done our best to make use of the opportunities available to us. Last December, we presented a proposal here to District Council and the Parks Department for a temporary solution using the Kirkstone lacrosse box. We initially had access to a fifty by hundred foot outdoor tent and planned to raise funds for its installation. Unfortunately, we lost access to the tent, which prevented us from moving forward. Following this, we collaborated with the North Shore Bike Park at Capilano Mall. After extensive discussions, we established a weekly skate night that met their strict insurance and business requirements. This program has been a resounding success, attracting skateboarders from across the North Shore and beyond throughout the past year. But to be clear, it is by no means close to meeting our community's needs, as it's only one night per week. Additionally, we have met with North Van city staff and Mayor Buchanan to understand why our well-documented and widely spread, widely supported need for a covered skate park has yet to be addressed. With the city undertaking its largest public infrastructure project to date, the new Harry Jerome Rec Center, it is frustrating that a new skate park has been approved without plans for a cover, despite nearly eleven years of advocacy. Just last, last month, the city released a public survey on the proposed twenty twenty-five budget, receiving a record number of responses. Funding for a covered skate park ranked among the top three issues with over thirty-three percent of respondents supporting it. We see this as a significant opportunity, one that would enhance recreational options in our city for a relatively modest investment. We also wonder whether this could be an opportunity for the district and city municipalities to collaborate in bringing this to life. And I can't squeeze the rest in. So thank you for your time. I'll leave that there. Yeah.
Thank you for your comments, Mike Tencredi. Okay, all right, council. I'm prepared to move on with this evening's agenda. If you recall, we did vary the order slightly. So the first item up for discussion will be item four point two, which is the council report from councillor back on the school crossing guard program. Councillor Back, would you like to, oh, we do have, sorry, a member of the public that signed up to speak to the item. So I'd like to welcome Tom Walker up to the microphone just before we get council's discussions underway. Welcome, Tom. You have three minutes to address the council when you're ready.
Well, I know, I know. Thank you. Thank you, your worship and members of council. I wanted to speak to the agenda because on February third, it was item eight. Now it's right up front, so I wish I could have been read alongside Tara. I'm the president of the North Shore Safety Council. Our motto is fostering a safe and active community. We presented here as a delegation last May, as we were about to celebrate our seventieth anniversary. I like to say that Elmer, the safety elephant, is just a little older than I am. Back in May, we outlined that among our activities was crossing guard training. We've been doing that for a long time, and I'm pleased to see that councillor back was paying attention. I don't know if this was an impetus for his recommendation, but we'll take credit anyway. Whatever the source, we heartily endorse this program and will do all we can to ensure success of the pilot. But if I may be so bold, I don't think a pilot is necessary. There are too many examples of successful programs nearby to warrant the need for launching a trial balloon. Not only that, but just the number of schools performing this task with volunteers. Sometimes at the personal risk, you've already heard about this evening, a small sample. We can, we can, we, we know that there is sufficient need to indicate the necessity of a district-wide program. Notwithstanding our support for councillor Back's recommendation, let's get on with it and go district-wide. And while we do support the recommendation, we want to encourage council and your excellent transportation staff to continue the good work in making the district North Vancouver a more safe and livable space where we can be active. Being active is part of being healthy. Being active is part of being safe. The more active you are, the safer you are. And so, as recently evidenced by the district in North Vancouver's good work in the walking school bus support program, bike lane extension and expansion, the extension of the east, of the Eastern Spirit Trail, the very effective electronic speed sign and traffic bulges on Delbrook. Let's get the same on Berkeley. And installation of no right turn on red that the district has undertaken. Credit to you. Thank you for doing that. Let's keep up the good work. Thank you.
Comments, Tom Walker. Okay, moving on with the item, councillor back, it's your motion. If you'd like to introduce it and move it, we'll find a seconder for you and carry on. Seconded by councillor Murray. Councillor Back, your comments, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Little. Wow. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. It really means a lot for each of you to take the time to come and share your personal experiences around this, around this issue. Tonight, I'm bringing forward a motion that I feel is not only necessary, but, but long overdue. A motion to take meaningful steps towards improving the safety of children on their way to and from school. First, again, thank you to everyone who has joined us tonight and to everyone who we've heard from over the last few weeks with regards to, to this idea. These aren't just imaginary worries that we're, we're hearing. They're the daily realities for families across our whole community. And as a parent of two young kids myself, I understand these concerns firsthand every time I walk or bike with my children, which is daily. And as a district, I believe we have a responsibility to act. The district of North Vancouver is home to twenty public elementary schools, twenty-one in my report, but it's twenty, I believe. And while we continue to invest in infrastructure improvements, such as those outlined in our Safe Roots to Schools program, the reality is that several key school routes remain unsafe. We need a focused and immediate approach to protecting our youngest and most vulnerable road users. And that's why this motion proposes directing staff to examine funding options for high priority school crossings and to launch a one-year pilot school crossing guard program in partnership with school district forty-four. We don't have to start from scratch. Other municipalities have successfully implemented similar programs. The city of North Vancouver, our closest example, funds paid crossing guards at all five of their elementary schools. We also have local resources, as we heard from Tom tonight, the North Shore Safety Council, they provide training for crossing guards. There is clear precedent for programs like this making a real difference. In addition to hearing from concerned parents, we've also heard from school packs, and I think we've heard from just about every pack across the community about the challenges of relying on parent volunteers to fill these roles. Many schools struggle to find enough available and trained parents, as we've heard, leading to an inconsistent and unreliable system. A structured funded program would ensure that crossings are staffed consistently by trained professionals, providing both safety and peace of mind for families. So what does this motion ask? One is that staff report back on funding options to support school crossings where safety concerns have already been identified. We know those schools. We've heard most recently from Eastview Elementary, and we've certainly heard from so many others here tonight and in the last few weeks. Two, that we work with school district forty-four to establish a pilot school crossing guard program running for one full school year. And three, that staff report back from the pilot with results and recommendations for how we can expand. Now, I want to recognize the very challenging financial environment that we're all in, and we around this table know this too well, that adding any new programs, any new costs right now is a challenge. I acknowledge that and that we need to give careful attention. However, I would urge staff to come back with options that allow us to start with the highest-risk school crossings and give us something to build upon in the years ahead. This is a practical, achievable step toward making our school zone safer. Studies show that crossing guards significantly reduce collisions and near misses at school crossings. They serve as both a protective presence for children and a visual reminder for drivers to slow down, stay alert. And it's clear that road safety around our schools need attention. And I think there's response to this motion has shone a pretty clear light, and I'll take two more minutes, on how prevalent that these road safety issues are, not at one school, at every school across the district. We've heard stories of near misses at crosswalks, drivers failing to slow down in school zone, and families just feeling uneasy about letting their eleven-year-old daughter walk to school. Some of these stories bring a tear to my eye. These are not minor inconveniences. They are real safety concerns that demand action. We have the opportunity to take a proven proactive step that will make a meaningful difference. And I hope that you will all support this motion, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor back. Councillor Murray, your comments, please.
Thank you, Mayor Little, and thank you councillor back for bringing this forward. It has come up over the years in the district school crossing programs and, and the city was used as an example of a program that worked for the district. It was always a little bit more challenging because of the number of schools that we have compared to the city. And, and then there was always that part, and I'm glad that you've put this into the report councillor back in regards to a partnership with the school district, because you know, we're, we're all together. We're all one, right? This discussion is kind of apropos for me because my youngest, who's seventeen and is going to the semi-formal tonight in his new suit, is graduating, and my oldest is twenty-two. And the stories bring me back to when they were in kindergarten. And I've been doing this job for a bit of time, and I did have a little power when my kids were in kindergarten, but I faced the exact same things as you have. And it's sad for me to think that the behavior in our community and the experiences at our schools are coming from parents whose children go to the school. And it was the same twenty-two or twenty years ago, fifteen years ago, when my kids began school. I remember one guy parked in my, I, I brought engineers out. I brought the engineering department out. I brought the mayor out. I'm like, we need to put a pickup in a drop-off area where my school was in Seymour Heights, in the Seymour. And I remember one guy came and pulled up and parked in, in the pickup and drop-off, and I went up to him nicely and knocked on, and his window was open. And I said, oh, excuse me, sir, but this is the pickup drop-off. It's not a parking. And as I was talking, he pressed the button on the window and it started to roll up. And I remember rising as the window was going up going, please, are you kidding? Are you gonna actually do that? It was so blatant. I heard stories of people's feet being run over. And, oh, awful. I saw, I saw a mother stop in the middle of the road one day, open up her minivan door and tell her kids to run and jump into the van. It was shocking then, and it's still continuing. I have to say, I'm glad my last is graduating and I'm, I'm out because I feel your pain. I experienced myself and I did everything that I could to try to change it. And I, I know that the packs, you know, there's some really, you know, active parents, all of you here, that really want to be a part of it, but it ebbs and flows. It changes as the years go, because then your kids age out of elementary and go into high school. And then you're not allowed to go to the school because your kid wants you not twenty feet near it. So I, I, I feel your pain. I do think that we have to understand the expectation, because I think we can put crossing guards in. We can find a way certainly to look at those high priority schools. But I think the idea of crossing guards policing behavior is going to be another challenge that they may not have the ability to do. I know a lot of these programs and Mr. Walker would know more. I know a lot of the programs are maybe retired people that want to take up some sort of a, a position. They're paid. But I'm not sure if they're going to be able to deal with the kind of behavioral scenarios that somebody in a uniform or a bylaw officer could deal with. And it's shocking that there is a level of behavior like that. I know that we tried to work with the, the pack to communicate to the parents, I'll take my two minutes as well, please, to communicate to the parents that we're all trying to work together and, and come up with solutions that protect our children and help one another and make it a nice place to go in the morning, not a stressful place. So that's something I think we have to talk about and figure out and work with the school district and with communication and you know, trying to maybe elaborate to the parent body what you've told us here tonight, these stories, these experiences. I think some are, you know, maybe you know, ignorant towards what's going on, and that's a shame. But I do, I do agree that there's some, I use Sherwood Park, and I think Sherwood, oh, Sherwood Park's there. Sherwood Park, that's my community Sherwood Park. And I was thinking the, the crossing guard for Sherwood Park, the, the highest and best use, if we were to put one in there, would probably be Dollar and Dollerton Road. You know, it's, I, I know in Burnaby, when I traveled to Burnaby, there's a crossing guard that's right on Willington. Nowhere really near this school, but it's the busiest crossing where kids have to cross from one place to another. So I think that's what councillor Back's asking in regards to information coming back. Where are some of those key places? Queens, for instance, is another sort of high traffic area. It's those high traffic areas that we have to look at. But I would just, I would just be careful at having an expectation that crossing guards are somehow going to be able to deal with parents not following the rules as to pick up drop-off areas, you know, zipping in, zipping out, you know, creating conflict. I don't know if that's what their role is going to be. So I just, I just, I caution the community on that one. But I will support this. I thank you for bringing the report forward. And it's a shame that people can't feel safe in our community.
Thank you. Councillor Pope.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you councillor back for bringing this important motion forward. And thank you so much to the parents for sharing your stories tonight and for the hard work you're doing out there supporting safety of the kids. I, it's been six years since my daughter walked to elementary school to Braemar and, and honestly, I'm, I'm just shocked to hear how bad it's gotten and about the increasing number of near misses and, and, and also the abuse. Like, what is wrong with drivers today? I, I just, I just don't get it. And I, I do think that it's no wonder, really, people in the end are feeling afraid to let their kids walk to school, and that just makes the problem worse with more cars and more drop-offs and so picking up on what councillor Murray has said about it may not solve all the problem. I'd also like to see much more focus on, on bad drivers. I'd like to see enforcement of, you know, stronger enforcement that includes ticketing and not just standing out there with the friendly little, you know, reminders and such. And I'd also like to see things like making it mandatory that parents park at least a block or two blocks away. I agree with Mr. Walker of the North Shore Safety Council that a pilot, I don't think it's necessary. I, little lives are at risk and we cannot delay. I think we should at least move forward with the high priority school crossings that are especially dangerous. And so I would like to propose a friendly amendment to this, which would be to take the pilot, pilot program aspect out of it, out of the motion, and just move forward with making it happen for the high priority schools.
So rather than doing that as amendment, I'm happy to bifurcate the motion so that you can vote on clause one. If you support clause one, and if you support all three, you can vote on two and three as well.
Okay, great idea. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Hanson.
Yeah, thank you very much. First of all, to councillor back for bringing this forward and also to the public. I did find it very informative listening to the presentations that were put before us today. Just following up on the issue of the costs and councillor back is very sensitive to costs. Everyone at this table is very sensitive and I thought as reflected as that comment was made, how do we put a price on life and on safety? How do we do that? And I also thought my other professional life as a personal injury lawyer has taught me a great And I also thought, uh, my other professional life as a personal injury lawyer has taught me a great deal about the, the real costs of injuries. I mean, one serious injury in the district. And we're talking about easily seven figures in costs and in medical costs. It'll be borne by all of us in the provincial health scheme. And, uh, potentially multiples of seven-figure calculations in loss productivity. Which is borne by all of us in one way or another. Millions of dollars is, is extinguished with a serious accident to a young person. Uh, and I wonder in view of that, if it wouldn't be appropriate to ask senior levels of government to consider some grant funding for this. And we were talking about relatively small sums of money, uh, which can prevent massive costs to their levels of government in other forms of cost. So, uh, thought that I'd put forward. Should, should those people be coming forward and participating? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Counselor Ma.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone coming out. Like many, many parents, I volunteer to do traffic duty when my daughter went to Caplan Elementary. And I share your views. It was challenging. Our neighbors, our friends were some of the ones that pulled up and, you know, made, um, unsafe maneuvers. I still see it every day. I live right across from the school. And I know from speaking with, uh, different, uh, school district administrator and staff here. They've tried different programs over the years. Sometimes it's successful, but the results aren't sustained. I've also participated in with, along with, uh, Counselor Back, some safety blitzes where the ICBC, the police and bylaws are present. But even of us standing there, there were still drivers doing unsafe maneuvers and putting kids at risk. I appreciate the comments about managing expectations. However, I believe we've reached a point where we need to do something. I will support, uh, staff looking at this and trying to make it safer on the priority schools, and I will support the pilot. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Forbes, your comments, please.
Thank you, worship. Um. Without giving my age away, but I'll just give a little history here. I used to be a crossing guard at my elementary school. And to this day, I still remember a man that got out of a car and came running after me. And I still remember that memory. So I totally understand what you're talking about. Then it moved to volunteer, um, parents. Back then, most people didn't necessarily have to work, so you could get volunteers out. So I think the only way you are going to get a consistent service is to pay for it. I have my eye on the dollar amount here, that it's over a million dollars for twenty schools. Given the figures that Counselor Back has told us. So I'm wondering if, when we take this back to staff, we could still look at some of the hard engineering. Uh, things that we may be able to do as well. And I like the idea of approaching the school. Um, because they're looking after all their schools and their children in there. And if we take steps to start looking after the crosswalks outside, if we could work some kind of a partnership with the school district as well. But I'm in favor of, of this. Thank you for coming.
And thank you. Counselor Back, I see your name, but you did speak twice at the beginning.
I only for about thirty seconds of my second two minutes. Could I just have a quick comment?
You want to clarify something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Little. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity. I just wanted to, uh, comment on two of the things that were in the report. Um, firstly, I think the number twenty-one schools, I think it's twenty elementary schools. Um, but in terms of the cost, uh, we were just working with what was sort of easily available in terms of, uh, cost information. I actually think it's gonna be much less potentially. Uh, the figure I got from the city of North Van is it's about twenty-two thousand per crossing guard. Not fifty-seven, I think, was the number in the report. So could potentially be, hopefully, a lot less, uh, on, on the cost front. Thank you.
Yeah, and, um, that reflects the number I got from the school board, too, is that, um, they don't pay it as a full-time position. They pay it as twenty hours a week. So it's about twenty-one thousand dollars per school or per location. Um, and the reason why I say that is because there are some schools that you, you ask the PAC and the PAC will say, there's actually three spots you need to be, right? And so we, we have to be, uh, careful about that. Um, I always feel like I'm, I have to be a bit of the grumpy Gus on some of these things and point out some of the challenges. This presupposes that this is the best solution to the problem. And in a lot of cases, I think the best solution to the problem is going to be through, um, using, uh, speed bumps. Changing the built form in and around, using signage and other things to affect behavior in those areas. Um, and so my problem is, if you divert the funds, you know, at twenty hours per week to twenty different schools. You are talking about cost to employ of over five hundred thousand dollars by the time it's all said and done. Um, uh, per year going forward. Well, five hundred thousand dollars can go towards fixing a lot of problems at a lot of schools. And so this presupposes that the best solution to the problem is with a crossing guard. And I gotta say, I don't think it is in most cases. I'm happy to hear expert advice on the matter. I have been at quite a number of the school blitzes. I've done just three this year. And I've done, uh, I do them every single year with, um, with the school district, our transportation department, the RCMP. And I know that people are on their best behavior when I show up with four cops. It's whenever, you know, when we get the best behavior. And it's still unacceptable. I, I, we, I've said this before at a lot of number of our, our meetings on these kinds of issues. That we have a culture problem in our community where people are terrible judge of risk around children. Uh, and they, if, if the parents could, and I am wagging my finger at the parents. Uh, if the parents could, they'd drive right down the front hallway and drop their kid off at the classroom. Um, and that is absolutely irresponsible behavior. And so we sit there at the entrance to the school with marked police officers, with bylaw officers, with parents and administration out front. And still, they'll lie to your face, oh, I'm just, just quickly dropping off. They will, um, park illegally. They will, uh, back up when, um, when they're not aware of their surroundings. Um, the wag of the finger is to the parents. Uh, there are some schools that have a lot of through traffic. I'm thinking about up off Highlands and, and Encarnation, where you have a bus route. And you have quite a bit of through traffic as well. But most of our schools, and Ross wrote, as mentioned, Sherwood Park. Um, they're at the ends of streets and the only traffic that's being generated there is by the parents, and it's still terrible. This, this culture problem that we have, uh, was what resulted, in my view, in the, uh, three grade nine students being struck at Mount Royal and, and Clicklon a number of years ago. Uh, where the kids were crossing, there was, there's stop signs, the kids were crossing the road out of, they weren't in the crosswalk themselves, but they were in the area of it. And they were struck by a car while crossing the road. And so it's not, it's obviously not unique to, uh, the elementary schools either. My challenge is what our role is in it. I can understand our role in managing the road surface and, uh, and the, um, signage to and from the school area. That's very clearly something that we do as a municipality. But as everybody said here, they recognize this as being a very broad problem. And the Ministry of Education should be funding it if it's a concern. This is a download to the municipalities. Uh, and if it's a download in, in the order of what's been contemplated here, I'll even take the lower number at five hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, that either the provincial government should be paying for the crossing guard program, or they should be paying for the improvements to make our schools safe. And so by doing this, we're probably gonna get an award from the province. Because every time we did, accept the download and we take on something that the province should be doing, they don't, they don't take it back and pay for it. Instead, they give us an award and say, look at this municipality is doing so well. We really appreciate them. And so I'm, I'm hesitant for us to move into this space in this way. I'd much rather have, um, talk to ICBC. Luis Mendoza from ICBC does our work with the school blitzes. And, uh, do this in an evidence-based way. And also make sure that equitably on the table is the discussion about changes in built form. Because I don't think a school crossing guard is actually the solution to the problem. You, you've even heard it here today. A school crossing guard is not a provincial constable. They have no ability to hand out tickets. They have no ability to follow up with, with parents and, and issue infractions. Um, uh, only, uh, a licensed police officer or a bylaw officer, if they park their vehicle, but a police officer, if it's just a move, if it's a moving violation that they're, they're subject to. And the, the, the cost to put an RCMP officer on the, on the road is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year per officer. Um, so it's, uh, this is a big challenge, but I, I, it has, if you are gonna do it, it has to be done in an evidence-based way. Uh, I, I don't even know whether or not we actually have an increasing problem in some of our schools. We certainly hear about it more, which may be a feature of social media. Uh, but, uh, I know that parents have been driving their children to school, uh, in droves for a long time now. Uh, I asked my mom when that, uh, when she noticed that happened. And, uh, she said it was the Michael Dunnehy case, uh, locally. Uh, when I was, uh, uh, at Seymour Heights as a kid, uh, and I only lived about five blocks away. All of a sudden, I was being driven to school. And I'm like, why am I being driven to school? It's a five-block walk to school. And that was my mom's reason, was, uh, that, that case. And it really changed the mindset of parents, that I have to deliver my child to the custody of the school, rather than letting them walk through the neighborhood. I will just say with my closing comments in that regard, um, we have an incredibly safe community as far as crime is concerned. And we should be working with the schools to make sure that you feel comfortable dropping your kids off away from the school. And using the trail system and getting into the school property multiple ways, not just at the front door necessarily. Um, but that needs to be addressed with the school. Um, so I'm inclined to support, uh, clause one. Um, I'm not supportive of two and three. Uh, and I still, um, I, I, I think you can't move forward without talking to the provincial government about a source of funding on this because it's their responsibility to make our schools safe. I don't see any other speakers at this time. Prepare to call a question. I'm gonna split it into three at the request, uh, request of Counselor Pope. Uh, so first, uh, I believe it's been moved and seconded by Counselors Back and Murray, uh, on clause one. Prepare to call a question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion is carried. On, uh, whether or not the pilot project piece, uh, and the report back after the pilot project piece, uh, is items. Uh, clauses two and three, that has been moved by Counselor Back, assuming it's kept moved by Counselor Murray. Prepare to call the question on that. All in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion is, is, sorry, that was carried with, uh, Counselors Forbes, Pope and Little opposed. Is that correct? Actually, didn't see your hand, Counselor Forbes. Were you opposed? On, on the second and third clauses. Yep. Okay, let's, let's clear it up, but I just want to be clear, a vote in favor is full pilot as well as the first clause. A vote opposed is that we don't need a pilot program. We're just going with clause one. Is that? Nope, you, you ju- you put your hand up in favor of it a moment ago, but it's not an amendment. I'm just, just, it's just bifurcating the motion. We've already voted in favor of clause one. That's been approved. It was unanimously approved.
And Counselor Pope said that she wanted the pilot to not go ahead. She just wanted it implemented.
Which is actually, if two and three are not passed, that's the effect. There is no pilot. There is no report back.
So I'm in favor of the pilot.
Can I just clarify? I did still want the report back. We still need the report back.
The report back is, is a report after, at the conclusion of the pilot, it says.
As I read the motion, it said that, you know, staff would investigate, um, you know, with a high priorities.
Uh, I, I think there's already a report back for, like, the staff are gonna return with, with clause one already. The, the clause three one is specific to the pilot project. If you don't support a pilot project, then there's no report back after a pilot project. So, so just to be clear with that. Okay. So number one is in pass unanimously. Just want to be clear about the vote on, on, on two and three. A vote in favor means you support also doing a pilot project and a reporting back. And a vote opposed means you don't support doing a pilot project, uh, with, with a vote. Is that clear? Yes?
Original motion, right?
Counselor Ma, just.
Certified. I, I learned a new term this week, uh, distinct propositions. So is it three or you having number one clause and you're combining second and third?
Dependent on two. So if you, if we're voting on, uh, it, it, they're together.
You could also read number three as expanding when you should.
So is your preference that I, that I split it into three parts, Counselor?
I thought that was the intent when you said initially that you wouldn't do it in three.
I was gonna do, do the two because clause three is dependent on clause.
Mayor Little, if I may, couldn't, could we ask the clerk to read the motion that we're voting on? Could that be okay? Thank you.
Uh, thank you through your worship. Uh, the motion that's being voted on at this current moment is, and that staffer directed to create a pilot program in conjunction with school district forty-four for a school crossing guard program to be implemented in the District of North Vancouver for the duration of one school year. And finally, that staffer directed to report back at the conclusion of the pilot program. Including options of expanding the program to other District of North Vancouver schools dependent on results.
Yeah, and it, so I'm happy to put that as motion. It is still problematic for staff because we don't know how much it'll cost. We don't have a source of funds, uh, for a pilot project. And so, so you'd be passing and directing staff to do something that they actually don't have funds set aside to do. So if council passes it, there's still gonna be a follow-up of some kind because they're gonna have to work with the administration to figure out how they're gonna pay for it. So, to, to be clear, though, what I'm, I'm asking the question is very specifically about the pilot project. Which I think is very clear in the motion that that's what the intent is, is that there would immediately be a pilot program. And I'm asking the council for their vote on that. I'm not gonna go back to debates, Counselor Murray.
Well, as the seconder, I'm just asking the mover if we could just simplify this and have staff report back on options, funding options to be included, given the mayor's comments.
That's number one.
Okay, so can we just leave it at that and have them report back on how this is going to happen? Could we ask staff when they could report back on this? What's the timing of this?
We can get that back to you as soon as possible. It, it's hard for us to, I mean, Mr. Milburn, uh, I know that's not are you able to talk about how quickly these kinds of things could come back? I mean, uh, unless I've got, oh, Nicholas here, uh, sorry, Michelle, do you have a comment from engineering on, on timing to come back? And, uh, on, on clause number one?
Through your worship, um, I don't have clear timing. I think we would be, uh, in the sense being for Peter Cohen on his behalf. Um, he would be factoring this into the strategic transportation plan that is due to come back, I believe, later this spring. But, yeah, I think it would probably be later this spring. Or further into the fall.
So based on that, Mayor Little, I think if we just asked after report back on the funding source, also discussion with the school district. And report back on that, we'll have more information to be able to move forward.
We've already unanimously passed that in one. Just want to be clear. So the question is, are we adding a pilot project on top of that with no source of funds identified and no costs identified? Which we could do, I would just need to then work with the administration to come back with a, a solution for how that would get done.
Yes, I'd like the original motion to be voted on. I think the report back can include a check-in with council. Um, but I'd like to give some direction tonight on a, on a pilot program, which is, which is what I'm asking.
That's up for discussion for, for, I'm gonna call the question on that right now. So the question is on, in effect, whether you want to add pilot, a project onto it immediately. A vote in favor is yes, and I'll find a way to make it happen. A vote opposed is no. We want to hear the report back from clause one first. Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Okay, opposed. Okay, the item, uh, I, it's tied to defeat then, if you don't, are you voting? You voted in favor. Okay, so it's been voted in favor with myself, Counselor Forbes and Counselor Pope opposed. Uh, the item has passed. All right, the next item up for discussion this evening is item four point four. Invite the, uh, members from the Community Heritage Advisory Committee to, uh, get ready to make their comments.
Hi. Okay, first of all, is that working? And secondly, we need to get out of this report.
While you're getting ready, I do have, uh, zero here from staff. Uh, would you like to make some opening comments?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, your worship and members of council. Community planning through a committee liaison, um, works collaboratively with the Heritage Advisory Committee to support council's heritage goals and the implementation of the Heritage Strategic Plan. In twenty twenty-four, we worked with the committee to increase education and awareness of district heritage, um, in the community. Um, we've worked with them to reduce barriers to accessing heritage resources. We've supported the conservation of heritage buildings on redevelopment sites through, um, a range of incentives and other tools. And we've worked with the committee to And we've worked with the committee to improve development processes and policies to better support heritage outcomes. The Heritage Advisory Committee provides valuable advice to planning and council and has supported outcomes such as council's decision on allowing on all single family lots, houses, secondary suites and coach houses, which has enabled in turn district staff to have better discussions with developers and win-win outcomes where we're able to protect or conserve heritage properties while also allowing for appropriate infill in specific neighborhoods. And so we, we hope to continue our, our good working relationship with the committee and welcome their presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
My name's Jennifer Clay, I think most of you know me and my colleague Jim Paul, our chair is here tonight to support. But this presentation is being made, it's representing input from the entire committee. So we are the, as you know, Community Heritage Advisory Committee. Tonight, we're going to give you a little bit of background about the committee, how we operate. Last year, in review, our work plan for 2025, a couple of concerns and some requests to council. So our committee has nine members and we are guided by the terms of reference first and foremost. Also, the Heritage Strategic Plan, which I have to say is the only, the district is the only municipality on the North Shore that has a Heritage Strategic Plan that's been updated in the last couple of decades. So we went through a process in 2019 and, and with the support of council, I came up with a ten-year strategic plan. It was approved in September of 2019, implemented in 2020 of January, which means we're, we're going into our, this is our sixth year of implementation out of ten. So we're guided by that Heritage Strategic Plan. We're also guided by our staff liaison and council, of course. And we set our work plan for each year based on the Heritage Strategic Plan. So last year, we undertook a walking tour that luckily all of you attended, which was fantastic. Normally, we would have taken you to visit houses, but we were too short on time, so we decided this would be a good option. We also undertook a couple of activities that we do on a regular basis, which is adjudicating, receiving and adjudicating heritage awards as well as the heritage grants. So last year, we awarded Capalama Suspension Bridge and Gross Mountain Resorts for activities that they did that supported heritage education in the district. And we're, I'm reporting on the 2023 heritage grants, where we awarded thirteen projects for a total of twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-seven. The Heritage Strategic Plan allows for fifty thousand dollars in grants, but we didn't get enough applications to give out the full fifty thousand. I think the only time we've done that is in the first year of that program. So we would like to actually increase the uptake on that. But of the thirteen that we awarded, ten were for restoration, renovation of heritage buildings. Two were to come up with statements of significance for two separate buildings. That, that's basically a document that highlights the heritage features, the important heritage features of the house and can be used if you're going to go a step further and actually protect the building and designate, formally designated. My house was one of the ones that got the statement of significance funded to some extent. And then our last award was for a heritage awareness in the heritage awareness and education part of the heritage grant program. Staff was very helpful in coming up with a better online application system and evaluation tool to support the adjudication of the heritage grants. Additionally, we did some other activities and some of these were, quite a few of them were with staff support. So staff came up with five different heritage walking tours. The intention is that these will be available digitally for better education of the public. They are not completed yet, but they are in progress and significant progress was made in last year. In addition, our committee feels that the Heritage Register is not probably as up to date as it could be. We feel like there are certain properties that should be added to that. That would take a council resolution. We haven't got to that point yet though. So what we did do was we set up a system, basically just an Excel spreadsheet, where we could identify and document properties that we thought as a committee warrant inclusion on the register. And what we're waiting for now would be the criteria with which to request that they get put it on, put onto the Heritage Register. In addition, the conversation around heritage plaques has been going on probably for at least a decade. Jim and I can attest to that. The City of North Van actually does have a very good program. We tried to model our program on that. What we did come up with, with input from staff, a lot of work on the part of staff actually, was a design for the heritage plaque where we haven't quite finished developing the program is in terms of how they're going to be installed. What we have found upon doing a survey of the City of North Van plaques is that they didn't stipulate where and how they should be mounted. Some of them are mounted directly on the house and you can't see them from the street. So they kind of defeats the purpose and some of them were, yeah, in, in, they were, had holes drilled through part of the, the, the script on the, on the plaque. So there, there needed to be standardization. So those are ongoing conversations. We did get sidelined a little bit on Bill forty-four, trying to figure out what was going to happen with Bill forty-four. Yeah, I bet you did. And the big problem for us was that heritage revitalization agreements, as you know, involve providing incentives and to the homeowner and Bill forty-four basically took away the thunder, our thunder in terms of doing that because they've now allowed, that no setback, hardly any setback. And off-street parking isn't really a thing anymore. At least that's what they were dictating should be municipalities should consider. And so, yeah, so we had to, we have to figure out a way with staff to come up with some other incentives that are going to be enticing for a homeowner since they can get most of it through Bill forty-four. Our work plan for 2025 includes the standard heritage grants and awards programs, adjudicate, receiving and adjudicating applications. We do, as I mentioned already, need to figure out a framework for evaluating properties that could potentially be added to the Heritage Register. Bill forty-four, again, we need some input from staff in terms of finalizing HRA, Heritage Revitalization Guide. We've been talking about this for a long time. We'd like to make it really clear to the public, to homeowners, what's involved in terms of undergoing a heritage revitalization agreement. So I think the, the guide is partially complete, but we'd also like included in the guide, a kind of a menu of incentives for the homeowner if they were to undertake a heritage revitalization agreement because it is a lot of work, costs a lot of money and it delays their ability to, to do the development. And so there needs to be significant incentives. And then finally, we have been talking about the importance of community engagement, promoting heritage education and focusing more on West Coast modern home education around West Coast modern homes. We have a fantastic inventory here in Edgemont Village. We wrote this back in November, so I'm happy to report that on the education front, staff, we put forward a public art program with a heritage flavor back in November. And we were pleasantly surprised to come back in January and find that it was basically fully developed and ready for launch for Heritage Week, which is February the seventeenth, the week of February seventeenth to Feb. twenty-third. So that's fantastic. Our concerns revolve around having enough staff to implement all the things that need to be implemented. As you saw from our 2025 work plan, a lot of the activities that we want to accomplish in 2025 involve staff input. We were very lucky to have Isabel Kim as our liaison for two full years under a contract that I believe she was allocated point five F, as a point five FTE towards heritage initially, but ended up working almost on a full-time basis and therefore we were extremely productive over those two years. Her contract was not renewed, renewed, and now we have another representative who's lovely, Holly, Holly is great. But she's also got a number of other portfolios to manage. And so our concern is to make sure that we have enough staff to continue to move forward with the Heritage Strategic Plan. As I said, we are the only municipality on the North Shore and we're super proud of all that we've accomplished, especially the grant program that is unique to the District of North Van. So we just want to make sure we have significant momentum and staff to, to make sure that we have that momentum. And one of the things included in the Heritage Strategic Plan, one of the goals, action item four point one actually discusses the resourcing in order to implement the Heritage Strategic Plan. And the outcome of this was to have a dedicated staff resource to implement the heritage program. So, yeah, so it is an action item in the Heritage Strategic Plan to have eventually a full-time person on the heritage portfolio. So that is one of our concerns. And the other concern we had was we, we, in order to be efficient and also to address some of the objectives of Bill forty-four to move along development, we were, we used to review the applications that related to properties that were on the heritage inventory. And so we, we were, we no longer are allowed to do that. And so we just want to make sure we, we do feel there's still value in us reviewing those. So, yeah, we just want to make sure that we're, we continue to be involved in heritage-related application reviews as much as possible. For sure, we know we are allowed to be involved in the registered properties. So our request to council would be to continue to support us in implementing the Heritage Strategic Plan and providing sufficient staff resources and a commitment to help us establish a system or framework for evaluating properties to be added to the Heritage Register and a commitment to finalize the Heritage Revitalization Guide and come up with a menu of incentives. And the last point, as I said, you've already helped us significantly in implementing the public art program. So that one doesn't apply anymore. We were supposed to do this in January, I think, so this is old. And I think that is it. We do wish to thank council and staff especially for helping us get to the, to where we are in terms of implementing the Heritage Strategic Plan. I do think it's, it is a coup or feather in our cap in terms of as much progress as we've made. The District of West Van got rid of their Heritage Advisory Committee. So, yeah, so, so we're doing really, really well in that, in that department. So, thank you. Any questions?
We have some comments from council. So first I'll move receipt of the report, thank you, seconded by Counselor Mury. Just my own comments on it, I mean, this is obviously a big challenge for us. I see we have Ms. Atva here and Mr. Milburn here in the room, so we have some additional resources here. But, you know, the challenge is that in some years we'll only have two applications and in some years we'll have five or six applications. And so setting aside resources perpetually for dedicated heritage roles is a very big challenge within our staff structure. I, I get that they'll have additional duties while implementing the Heritage Strategic Plan, but it's, you know, even, even at point five to cover only two to six applications a year is not the standard that we would have for all of the other planners that are in the system in terms of the, the workloads that they would have to have. So it is a challenge for us to implement it in that way. I will ask, we, we were very surprised by Bill forty-four, I think someone commented on that as well. And, you know, as a former Chair of the Heritage Commission, one of the things that we saw disappear in forty-four, which was a surprise, was the comments you made about heritage revitalization agreements losing really the carrots that they have, you know, by changing setbacks, varying parking and all of the other things that could be used to incentivize an HRA. Beyond that, Bill forty-four, if you were a community that implemented SMU, I believe, Mr. Milburn, that it nullified a bunch of the covenants that could be put in place on, on those. Is that, is that correct? Or, but it, it did impact your ability to protect heritage in, in those spaces.
That's correct. Existing provincial protections or heritage designations or covenants could still be enforced on historical, historically protected properties previously. But it essentially, it wiped away the ability to incentivize through density the development of heritage properties in exchange for the protection of that heritage value. And essentially said, we would have to permit the redevelopment of a heritage property despite the heritage value if it was already not protected. And so it was a severe constraint on the existing powers that existed prior to June thirtieth of last year.
Just at least goes to show that the intent of Bill forty-four certainly wasn't to recognize heritage characteristics in our community. In fact, in a number of ways, it weakened the protections for them. So while I'm definitely a supporter of heritage in our community, I am going to have to sit down with our staff and find, you know, what, what is a reasonable way for us to apply resources in a predictable fashion to support the goals of the Heritage Strategic Plan, which has been endorsed by the council, but also, you know, recognizes the staff workloads that we have to manage within our, our departments as well. But I think that's about all the comments I'm going to make at this time. Counselor Mury, you were the seconder on the matter, is that correct?
Yeah, thank you, thanks, Ms. Clay, for your presentation, excellent. Can you, was it the turning point? I mean, I've sat on the Heritage Committee in the past, mayor's been on it, Counselor Hanson is currently, currently on it. And was the, the building of the strategic plan sort of the turning point in how you moved forward? And because it was a little bit bumpy for a number of years, trying to sort of get focus and trying to get it into a place that was really activating what we were trying to achieve. And so that full, that, that consultant, Ms. Kim, that was hired, is she with us still? No, okay, so how could, I just like to understand a little bit more about how we achieved that. Who's going to tell me about that?
Through your worship, the, the position was actually a temporary full-time position for two years, which council approved. The two-year term expired and the, there simply wasn't any budget left to, to continue with, with the position.
So was it fully solely focused, I just need to be reminded, was it solely focused on the heritage? Did she work solely on heritage?
Yes, the principal focus of that position was to support the implementation of the Heritage Strategic Plan.
And it put together the strategic plan and probably helped a lot more with visioning and scope and everything.
The Heritage Strategic Plan was already in place. So, so as of whatever I said, twenty twenty was when we first started implementing it. But by having somebody on full-time, it, it really did help in terms of, yeah, implementation.
Okay, yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to address the, the mayor's point as well is that in terms of application, I'm, I'm assuming you were talking about development applications per year. But the whole point of having the Heritage Strategic Plan is that whoever is our staff liaison and, and our committee has other work to do that doesn't involve development applications. So, yeah, so we, we, you know, we meet almost, well, ten months of the year. And we always have something to discuss because we've got this Heritage Strategic Plan to implement.
So that really galvanized the work and was able to move all of it forward. Okay, that's excellent. And I, yeah, I look forward to the mayor having conversations about how we're going to continue to move this forward in the direction, we don't want to go in the direction of West Van. Your work is very valuable and the history and the heritage of this community is very valuable. And I certainly enjoyed our walk. You know, we have gone through the houses in the past and, but it was a very interesting walk and we learned a lot. Even though you live, it's like being a tourist in your own community, right? You don't see a lot of things. But the other thing I would just like to say, you know, to the committee, because so many of the committee members have been on it for so many years, including yourselves. And you have actually just been, you know, given the opportunities to stay on it for as long as you want. And I, I just want to thank both of you very much. You know, these, these. these uh, these committee members that we have, they they do it because they love it. And um, because it's so important. And uh, thank you so much for the dedication that you've given for this to this community. You've gone above and beyond. So really, I really mean that sincerely. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh councillor Beck.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, most of my points were covered, but I just want to thank uh Ms. Clay and Mr. Paul for all your years of uh service on this committee. Um, and just reiterate that I value heritage uh more than ever. I also enjoyed the walking tour that we did in Lynn Valley. Um, and I would be quite interested to hear about the impact of Bill forty four on heritage and HRAs. I hadn't really given that uh too much thought. And you know, we've been trying to make HRAs more effective and see more uptake over the years. We most recently, I think, uh, the most recent one we saw was on Harold Road, the Cross Residence. Um, and they're always really interesting, special projects usually that come together with those. So be interesting to learn more about, you know, how we can continue to try and incentivize those types of projects. But thank you very much for your work.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Hanson.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Clay and Mr. Paul, uh, I have sat on your committee uh since twenty twenty two. Uh, not on the committee, but in the uh council uh liaison role. And I can say it's been a singular pleasure uh to get to know both of you, get to know the entire committee and uh to share with you your passion uh for heritage and heritage preservation. Uh, your comment with respect to Isabel Kim and her contributions uh to implementing uh the vision for heritage in the District of, I've been heard by me. And uh, I I certainly will uh uh continue to bring that issue forward uh to council because it was obvious uh as a person sitting in on those committee meetings that uh she did a lot of important work towards uh implementing the strategic plan. Um, I'm going to ask you a question because of your vast uh knowledge and uh which I've certainly learned about and sitting with you in the committee of heritage. And it's both these HRAs. I mean, I've sat on council for coming up eleven years and uh we really haven't had very many. Uh, recently we had one in Lynn Valley that was a success and I think we all felt felt good about that. Um, but overall, it uh, I mean, I'm I'm stretching my mind to remember. It's been very few. Yeah, I think that might have predated, that might have predated me.
One, one, four, West Windsor.
Right, and that went down.
All the addresses too.
Yeah, that went down defeat if I've I've not mistaken.
No, it was skinny lot. It was skinny lot.
I know there was one uh during my first term that went down.
Up on.
Defeat with myself and councillor Bond voting for it, who at the time was on the committee. But anyway, putting and I think councillor Murray voting for it at that time, but uh putting putting that aside, I'm just saying there haven't been very many. The question that I would pose, Ms. Clay, I mean, do you have any ideas as to how we can improve the incentive structure for an HRA? How can we entice more people uh to come forward with HRAs uh as as an option?
I I think we've had one of these discussions when Mr. Milburn came to one of our meetings, but I think some of it's process related. It's very time consuming. We've talked about fast tracking permits, maybe not charging as much for permits or making it free or something to incentivize people. Um, and you know, we've talked about potentially tax, um, property tax, um, benefits and various other like financial benefits. Um, yeah, it just, unfortunately, I think the biggest problem is the process. It takes just so, so long. And because you're dealing with a heritage house and then you're trying to um deal with code and and building codes and things like that on a hundred year old house. So Jim, do you have any other thoughts? Time, yeah, yeah. It's mostly time, but also like off off street parking variances used to be an incentive we could grant or step back vary variances and things like that. And we no longer can because of Bill forty four. Yeah, so we just have to be creative. Um, yeah, other municipalities had to have a great success with HRAs and city of uh New Westminster, Victoria. Um, but yeah, maybe we can put that on the agenda for one of our discussions in the coming months. Yeah.
Thank you. Councillor Murray, follow up?
Well, it just, you know, I was so relaxed and then I, Bill forty four gets me all riled up. Um. Um, I'm I'm trying to remain calm in the month of February. Um, maybe we need to um, we did talk about having the committee and maybe Heritage BC or, you know, the or the the larger organizations write to the ministry and explain some of the challenges that have been imposed in regards to Bill forty four. Um, and did we do that? Have we have we gotten together with other organizations in the region to talk about? You know, letting them know the impact of this legislation on heritage. I mean, certainly, you know, New Westminster and Victoria, I mean, it's it's what it's what Victoria is about. Is protecting that old sort of world charm of that city and uh New Westminster the same, you know, and and those, you know, neighborhoods that you can drive through in on the North Shore to experience what was in that incredible architecture um that will be lost because of some of this um legislation is is sad. Um, and certainly there's opportunities as we've looked at with these HRAs um to find win win situations. So should we pursue that again? Um, just to point out some of these implications that were not contemplated. Um, I think, you know, some of the legal opinions that we've gotten in regards to this legislation, the concept or the comment always is nothing's been tested in a court of law yet. You know, we don't have case, we don't have case law in any of it. And um, so it's kind of the wild, wild west still. And uh, I think it is very important to still bring up, you know, an awareness to the ministry about what this will do to um, you know, once it's gone, you can't get it back. So I just would be interested in your comments.
I just think we need to be creative.
One of the things that we're missing are our heritage advocacy groups on the North Shore. Uh, the district is the only one left now. And so.
City has one too.
Well, oh, well, yes, but um, it's been um somewhat.
Yeah.
Um, reduced. And uh, so it's hard to collaborate with with groups when they don't exist.
Yeah, we just need to be creative. Yeah.
I see no further speakers on the matter. Uh, oh, sorry, Mr. Milburn, you had some comments?
Uh, just one point, uh, staff through council's direction are are quite committed on the um updates to the provincial housing legislation response. So updates to the official community plan zoning by this year. Uh, however, just there is conversation about incentivization. We will be looking at various issues like density bonus zoning. That's traditionally called density bonus zoning for heritage opportunities in subsequent updates um starting in twenty twenty six. So that's one of the items that we've identified preliminarily um as a scope that we'd like to come and and confirm with council uh to have a conversation about. Um, and the density bonus, and of course, would not be just about heritage, but that would be one of the opportunities in which is incentivized. So staff have lots of ideas and we love working with the committee on exploring these ideas and advancing them. Um, and that is certainly one that we would be coming back to council uh once we complete our statutory obligated uh requirements this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've uh, it's receipt has been moved and seconded and prepared to call the question. All in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried. Thank you very much for your presentation.
And thank you for moving us forward.
Don't you want to stand?
No.
Looking for more volunteers. There you go. Okay, uh, I will, I will return back to the regular order. Sorry to finance. Uh, you're being delayed a little bit. Um, but that does mean that item four point one is up for discussion. And this is uh proposed development charges amenity cost country, cost charges by law. And uh, we have any comment from staff?
Oh, thank you very much, your worship, members of council and the community. Uh, this bylaw was forgiven first reading on July ninth, twenty twenty four. Uh subsequently, council asked that a workshop be held, which was held on January twentieth, twenty twenty five. The bylaws now returning for council's consideration of second reading as amended and third reading. And uh, financial services, uh staff and and myself are available to answer questions to council. Uh, just final note, um, it is quite important that we move forward on this particular bylaw in a timely way. Uh, there are certain statutory requirements to amend the official committee plan and zoning by law by the end of the year, which will mean that our normal process of collecting community amenity contributions through rezonings will be somewhat diminished uh because we'll have more zoned properties, which really emphasizes the need for updates and the creation of a new amenity cost charge by law. So we can capture that value as um it's a very necessary contribution towards amenities needed by that development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milburn. I'll be moving staff recommendation. Is there a second there on the matter? But councillor Hanson, just my own comments on it. Um, I do think we need to move forward on this for a lot of the reasons Mr. Milburn just stated that we need to provide some certainty in the marketplace as we're moving forward with a number of projects. Um, and they need to reliably know what uh the costs are going to be. Um, and obviously it empowers us to be able to collect those charges to uh address uh our community commitments. Um, you know, I sort of reserve the right, though, in future to um add a little bit of complexity. Uh, you won't hear me say that very much, but I think this is one where the 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 raw mechanics of it aren't in the realm of fair. Um, and so uh, the way this is set out is a per unit charge. Um, and uh, it doesn't differentiate between uh large units, small units, uh extremely expensive premium luxury units and very entry level units. Uh, it is an entirely regressive in that regard, uh where it um you know, the smaller, the cheaper the unit, the higher percentage of your paying in ACCs. And so um I don't think that adequately addresses, and I think our our community sort of expects that uh that the impacts, I mean, a larger unit is probably going to have more average people in it. It's going to use more services. You know, the higher end units, obviously, it's a capability to pay to some degree. Um, not to an unlimited end, but it just seems that a very entry level, simple unit probably shouldn't have the same charge as uh, as uh, you know, high end uh luxury units. And so uh, while I'm I'm supportive of this going forward at this time to empower staff to be able to proceed and to collect money for uh public amenities that we've committed to, I I do think that this is one of those cases where um it doesn't actually fairly represent uh the impact in our community. And so I I am going to be looking for other ways for us to admit it, maybe looking to the the rest of the region as they implement their plans to see if someone comes up with a creative way to address some of those issues. Mr. Milburn, do you have any comment on that or?
Yeah, just just briefly to say that um staff will anticipate the need to come back in early twenty twenty six with revisions. Uh, once council has considered the um uh provision of uh twenty two thousand three hundred and sixty nine units uh through zoning and official community plan designation by the end of the year, there will be a need for us to recalculate both the amenity cost charges as well as development cost charges to reflect both the numbers of units that are permitted within the twenty year horizon, as well as the amount of amenities that will be needed to support them. So all of those numbers will be rejigged. And so this will be a perfect opportunity to raise those fine tuning uh conversations in early twenty twenty six.
Uh, I believe, sorry councillor Hanson, I think you seconded. Did anyone else have any other comments on it?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, this is a matter that has been discussed in a workshop. Um, and uh, we did discuss some of the history and uh implications of these changes. Um, what we're talking about here is making sure that we have a means uh to pay for growth and uh we had a mechanism that doesn't exist anymore. Um, overall, I I think it is the consensus that this will add to cost uh for for development, for uh buildings and uh Mayor Little has pointed out how that land quite inequitively. Uh, nonetheless, it is obviously necessary that we have some kind of a strategy to ensure that growth pays for growth. And within the current legislation, this would seem to be a a practical. Uh, the only available strategy for the time being, but I do look forward to uh the review in twenty twenty six. And I do look forward to learning how uh other communities address amenity cost charges within the new legislation. Thank you.
Councillor, I see no further speakers at this time. Prepared to call the question. All in favor? Contrary minded, motion is carried. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on our finance staff uh to do the introduction of the draft financial plan. While Mr. Danlock is getting prepared, I see that Mr. Stewart would like to comment. Mr. Stewart?
Yeah, your worship, I just would make one brief comment. This is the introduction followed by a a community input, followed by council debate. So I just want to be very clear about that. Thank you.
Yeah, well, that's fair to remind us. Uh, I know that uh we often get conditioned that as soon as something is introduced to uh to a council meeting that we we go in and start to dig for for some some good uh, you know, questions, but
Tell us for final.
The process is is we
My favorite part of the.
Introduced, and then there's a few steps before um we we carry on. So I, your your comments on that? And wondering, Mr. Down, can you also include in your introductory comments perhaps a response to Dr. Cost's uh comment um about? Sure. The household impact and and um and why that number can't just simply be reversed to determine, yeah, oh, you get it. There you go.
Thank you, your worship, and good evening, council and the members of the public that are listening in. Uh, to address Dr. Cross's question uh with this budget, one percent on the tax levy, a one percent increase on the tax levy is about twenty eight dollars on the average home. Thus, the five and a half percent gets you to about the hundred and fifty two dollars or so that's included in the table. Um, we'll follow up with doctor cost just to make sure that uh we understand his question. Um, and we'll make sure that it's recorded in the public input so that the question and the answer are there for everyone to see.
Thank you.
Uh, tonight, after a lengthy process, staff are introducing the draft financial plan to council and the public. Information on the budget is now available on the district's website and feedback can be received starting tomorrow at eight AM. This report is recommended to be received for information to begin the public input process prior um to council's opening remarks on February twenty fourth, once it's had a chance to review the materials. Uh, just like the public, uh council's only receiving these materials just tonight. Uh, but the direction reflected in in these materials is consistent with the direction that we staff have received from council over the last the last number of months. Before I get started, I want to thank council for its direction in getting us to this stage, uh the public for their input throughout the process so far. And to staff for their collaboration during the development of the budget. It wasn't easy identifying the savings included in this plan, but I believe the savings target is achievable. This budget acknowledges the challenges we're facing today and expect to face in the future. In particular, on the North Shore, it includes adjustments to the operating budget of four point three million dollars to to bring the budget into balance, maintain services and reduce the proposed property tax increase to five and a half percent. This budget looks also looks beyond this year to place the district on a more sustainable financial path. As there are still many unknowns, the plan is also flexible and can be adapted as new information comes available. This presentation includes a review of the budget timeline, fiscal environment, highlights the corporate plan and provides a brief overview of the financial plan. Tonight's presentation will be followed by a public input period starting tomorrow and ending on February twenty fourth. Following the public input period, staff will summarize the input and share it with council ahead of its budget deliberations meeting on March tenth. As the budget must be adopted before the tax rate by law, the financial plan is scheduled for adoption on April seventh. There continue to be a lot of, there continues to be a lot of uncertainty in our fiscal environment. Our plans are impacted by external factors, including changes within the region through senior governments. And there's also the threat of tariffs, which if imposed, will test the resiliency of the economy. So while some measures shown on this slide, like lower inflation that have been experienced year over year and lower borrowing rates um are generally positive, there's still much uncertainty about the future. Staff have begun to assess the the risks posed by the tariffs to determine what we can do to prepare for the potential supply shocks at the local level in future. I've included this slide as councils ask ask uh these questions in the past. They um, you've asked us to show the total tax bill that residents are are facing. So this is the total property taxes and utility fees charged to a single family home in twenty twenty four. There are six different components to the residential property taxes and utility bills, of which we only have some control over two. Tonight's conversation is. Tonight's conversation is only about the part shown here in dark blue on the left, which is our municipal property taxes. Due to the projected increases in Metro Vancouver's utility fees, which is forming a growing share of the gold on the right, the North North Shore or North Vancouver residents are likely to move closer to the top of this chart by 2029. The district strives to keep property taxes competitive in the region while also ensuring taxes for sustainable service delivery and are at a level that the taxpayers can bear. This stable and balanced approach has been effective with the district maintaining one of the lowest average tax increases over the last 10 years while also working to address the infrastructure deficit. This slide shows the corporate plan, how the corporate plan was informed by the official community plan and council directions, and then how the financial plan supports the corporate plan over both the near term and the long term. The framework ensures continuity and goals and priorities while enabling the organization to adapt to it, to adapt as it responds to the community input, addresses organizational changes, challenges, and adjusts for external influences. The plan focuses the organization on six strategic goals, and the next two slides include some of those highlights reflected in the financial plan. Transportation improvements include resourcing, or sorry, resources supporting rapid transit to the North Shore and planning for the transportation needs driven by the new housing legislation. His commitment to affordable housing are also included, as well as internal resources dedicated to implementing the economic development strategy. Here you can see the plan also includes climate actions to reduce risk to the community, investments to improve community spaces and parks, as well as resources to complete two new artificial turf fields. And finally, the plan includes resources to improve community engagement, communication, and the streamlining of our operations through ongoing investments in technology and other resources that help build staff capacity. So in this budget, you'll see some increases in investments in technology and throughout the municipal services section of the budget. It'll be offsetting efficiencies as well. Now take a brief look at the financial plan and the proposed adjustments to the operating budget. Early on in the process, it was evident that there would be significant increases in our protective services costs shown here just under the property tax increase on the table on the slide here. Those increased costs included the transition of the RC and the telecom services to Ecom and increased overtime costs for police and fire services. Collective agreements and the increased cost to build and maintain infrastructure is also driving costs up. And due to these drivers, the potential rate increase grew to 9% towards the end of last year before identifying three and a half percent in savings to realize the proposed property tax increase of five and a half percent, including the 1% to address the infrastructure deficit. Following council direction through the budget outlook last July, staff began assessing opportunities to bring the projected property tax increase down. Strategies included revenue generation, expense reduction, along with a list of potential initiatives, resulting in a net savings of 4.3 million. These adjustments are reflected in the municipal services section of the budget workbook with highlights on of the potential initiatives included on the next slide in this presentation. Council will provide direction on the operating budget adjustments at the budget deliberations meeting on March 10. The potential initiatives included in this budget total 1.3 million and are made up of the seven items on this slide. Initiatives include reducing expectations for street services, along with divesting low use assets. This initiative will be led by Public Works. Also in the list is introducing a curbside management strategy, including a pilot project for paid parking on street in the fall of this year. This initiative is led by Engineering Infrastructure Services. And the Planning Properties and Permits Division is leading initiatives three, six, and seven, which include business licenses for short and long term rentals, some new development fees, and increases in bylaw enforcement. Fire Services has proposed introducing inspection fees for re inspections as well as for commercial and industrial buildings. Finance has been working with parks on item number four there, where we reviewed paid parking in parks. And they're proposing adjusting the parking rates to align with the rates that are inland valley, or sorry, not inland valley, in West Vancouver, while maintaining the annual resident pass at $10 per year. If before we wind up, I just wanted to go through some of the major issues and look into the future a little bit. So looking beyond this year, there are a number of major issues impacting our finances. You're familiar with all of these on on the screen here, and we continue to to see many other unknowns, including impacts from the changing economy and the need for sustainable funding model for affordable housing. So there's still many unknowns and issues that we need to deal with. There is some good news. While we're facing many issues, we also continue to maintain services and have plans to continue to build our staff capacity. And in addition to that, there are a number of long term, longer term opportunities that we're exploring that we look forward to bringing back to council as we we get a little bit a little bit more information on them and and they're a little bit more viable. Considering all of the major issues and unknowns that need to be factored into the five year plan, this is our tax outlook based on the best available information today. So while the potential tax increase for this year has been reduced to five and a half percent, and the outlook for our services, the protective service and other services beyond this year show some positive signs, the infrastructure deficit has grown, and we'll need to plan for other items in the future. There has been talk of a municipal growth framework through the FCM, but there's been no real support for that initiative yet, and we haven't seen any ongoing funding for affordable housing and for infrastructure related to that. We also have risks related to declining senior government grants, and there's potential for further downloading. So as mentioned, this is our best estimate at this time with tax increases continuing at five and a half percent, unless municipalities receive additional funding or we take another look at our services. So I just want to be honest about where we are with our best available information and give you an idea about what increases might look like beyond this year. These challenges require us to continue to work closely with our partners, municipalities across the region, and with other levels of government. That brings me to the end of my presentation. The information on the budget, as mentioned at the beginning, is now available on the district's website and feedback can be received starting tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. Council's introductory remarks are scheduled for February 24th, following the public input. And the report is recommended for receipt.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll be moving the staff recommendation. Counselor Mary, I see your name up. Will you be seconding? Thank you. Um, yeah, first, just I'm looking forward to digging into this deeper and and seeing what's in there. I've been through a lot of budget processes over the years, and they all have a slightly different flavor to them. And so I'm looking forward to seeing your proposals for this. Just a process question, I would say. I know the 24th meeting is quite a chocolate block meeting, and so is it, is it possible to extend to the March 3 regular meeting of council for council's deliberations? Maybe that's something, a discussion I should take offline, but I'm just wondering, you know, as we have about eight weeks to go through the whole process, but this does seem only two weeks of public input period between here and the 24th seems a little bit tight for that. We do have a regular council meeting seven days later, and you know, is there some flexibility on those dates with those? If I, you know, worked with the clerks department to potentially review those dates, is that problematic for the delivery of the proposal?
No, I I don't think so. It also would give us some time to compile the input received and
I work on that with our staff to see if there's there's an opportunity to do that. I do know the 24th meeting is quite a full meeting at this point.
Your Worship, yeah, we've already taken steps to try to trim that 24th meeting. I just wanted to let you know that. And certainly we can, with, you know, some some ease, and it gives staff a little bit of time to compile all the results, the so the delay in the in the 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 financial system will not will not kill us. Let's put it that way, and I am working on reducing the 24th agenda.
No, I get it. And the public can provide their feedback up until the time we, no problem as well in other through other means. But I get you kind of have to set some cutoff times in order to compile it as one consolidated list, but I'm going to work with staff to see if that's recommended. And then I guess just my final comment on it, just want to thank staff for tackling this big issue. The the budget is what drives this organization, helps us achieve our goals. And it is an incredibly incredibly important part of what the council does, but also what our staff does to help give guidance to how all of the departments are going to have to the the resources that they're going to be able to apply to carry out the directives that are sent to them. And so it's an incredibly important process. So I just wanted to express my appreciation to you and your staff team for for all of the work that you're doing on this. Counselor Mary.
Thank you, Mayor Little. Thank you, staff, for your work on this challenging time that we're in. You know, we had four years of sort of, you know, nothing coming out of the US quiet. Now it's every minute of every day, some chaotic situation is rearing its head and you know, today it was the markets, you know, this tariffs on steel, what's next? It's so uncertain. And, you know, so I just I just, I think we did, you know, notwithstanding, you know, the direction that we just gave in regards to the crossing program, but we're going to be creative about that. We're going to look at a pilot and we're going to, you know, gently move in that direction. There are things that, you know, council initiatives, council wants to work on, and we have to to recognize that up against the priorities of the municipality. And I would just say that I think we have to be able to really recognize what is nice, should, must in this document. Because we can't look at a five and a half for next year. Where are we going to be next year? What is it going to look like? You know, we've got four years of chaos from the south, and however, they're going to be impacting us. And so I think we have to go into it thinking we can't be at five and a half next year. So what are we going to do to get it lower? Right? What are we all going to have to give up? I think that's going to have to be a discussion that council has, but early on and not sort of, you know, when we would regularly start our budget discussions, really start looking at what we can do without. So I'm going to go through this very carefully and and see if there are places that we can push things off until another day in order to, I didn't mean to do that. Because I'm really worried about the future, and I don't like the fact that we're going to be getting up on that list. The the bar list that you had, the graphs where the district will rise closer to the top, given the situation that we have our, we find ourselves in with the utility costs in metro. We continue to work at that. And we may actually recon or bring back a reconsideration by law, or not a reconsideration, but a discussion on the allocation again, if there's some increased support from the board. But in order to offset those costs, we have to find it in our own budget. Because we can't guarantee the region is going to stand behind us. They haven't yet. And but we continue to work towards that. So I think we just have to be very, very cautious with the money that we're spending in the direction we're going in. And I think there's a lot of things in here. You know, that we can, we can defer for the time being until we have a better understanding as to what we're up against, especially for next year. So and I know we're waiting for Metro to complete their long term capital plan. And I asked about that today, and so we'll continue to press them as well.
Thank you. Counselor Ma, your comments?
Thank you for this break. Thank you to your staff working on this. I I know I can just imagine how challenging it was from our discussions. Notwithstanding comments that we cannot come back with a 5%, 5 and a half percent increase next year, and that we do need to watch our expenses. I know that in this year's budget, two major projects were deferred. Their budgets were cut, but they were deferred to the next budget cycle, and that's namely the gravel conversions and Spirit Trail Etrion Extension. I I don't expect a big windfall, you know, in government grants in the next couple of years, but I just want to ask a question just in general, like when projects get deferred, what triggers, what do we look for before we bring something back? You know, my understanding is with this budget, we we might hit 90% or sorry, 90 million in terms of debt. And by the end of five years, there'll be some debt retired and it comes back down to about 72 million. Is there a certain point where if we got our debt below 50 million, would that be potentially a period where we can reevaluate some of the projects that we have put off? Or
through your worship, the counselor Ma, one of the things that we look at when when we're looking at the borrowing is, of course, that there's an identified source of funding to service that that then we look at the limits. We have an ascent free zone, which is 5% of ongoing revenue where we we can move forward with with borrowing, where with council direction. Otherwise, when we go pass out a cent free zone, we need to go out to the public, and so there'll be opportunities for that in the future.
Mr. Stewart has additional comments?
Yeah, I I have a maybe a little bit of a simpler answer. There was a time when the budgets were fixed, and they were fixed for a year. And we've gone into a more, I think, a more productive cycle where we make adjustments throughout the year, and every year represents an opportunity for council to make an adjustment to the annual budget and the projection to for the budget. So I I think you should look at approving this year and the consequences of of this year in some cases. But at the end of the day, we we have lots of flexibility to change our our priorities and to deal with situations that come up. We are going to face some real pressure on the construction side. There's no question about it. We're facing crazy pressure on the fleet side. But the fact of the matter is, we've now moved into a more flexible budgeting circumstance. And so council does have the opportunity twice a year to amend it as well as through the regular budget process, as well as adjusting the five year rolling rate. So.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Pope.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for putting this budget together, and especially thank you to the staff behind the scenes who are presenting the budget tonight. But Mr. Danilak has advised me that they've done all the work. I just want to be super clear on the timeline. So are we now saying March 3rd is when we will, what's happening March 3rd exactly?
Through the merit of Counselor Pope, budget deliberations are still scheduled for March 10.
Yeah.
We're considering scheduling opening remarks. Once you've gotten, you have an opportunity to receive the public input summary one week earlier. So that's it. So there'll be two two touch points with council in March, if if we're successful in making that happen.
The financial plan has to be approved by April 11.
April 7th is the is the date scheduled for adoption.
We have some flexibility between here and April 7th to get everything. So if council comes back with amendments or changes to it after the 24th, then we have a little bit of wiggle room at that time to make those changes and and come and amend the financial plan. come and amend the financial plan for it to be properly submitted by April seventh.
Okay, so we've got public input starting tomorrow and going through until March tenth?
Through to the February twenty fourth?
Oh, only to February twenty four?
And that gives us an op, sorry, there's a full schedule in the workbook that you could refer to as all the steps, just the highlights are in the presentation.
Can I just draw your attention to our website, which says, as of tonight? Public input, February twelfth to March tenth. That's not correct. Is that what you're saying?
Twenty twenty fours, is that last year's?
It should say.
Maybe.
It should say February twelfth to twenty fourth, we can check that, but.
Yeah, could you check that? And while I'm on the subject of the website, I'm, I'm just wanting, like, I went on, online to our main page as an outsider when we started the meeting tonight, knowing that the twenty twenty five draft financial plan, you know, should have been there. And, and was there? Maybe, except maybe it was the twenty last year's. And I couldn't find it. Like I keyed in budget here, I went to government documents, I went to council meeting tonight. It was really hard to find. Eventually I keyed in the search, draft financial plan and it came up. And I don't think it should be that hard for, you know, somebody like me or anybody else in the public to find our budget. It, I think it should be a simple search engine change that gets everybody through right away. And I'd also like to see it on the landing page of the main website so that people can know exactly what the timeline is for responding and getting, giving their input and, and people feel informed about it. I, I'm really sorry, but I'm, I'm still not clear. So on February twenty fourth, that's when council starts discussing it?
That's when we close the, the public input portion, it's compiled for the council and yes, the council deliberations start at that point.
But there isn't a decision made on the twenty four?
No.
This meeting is intended to be the decision.
In March tenth, it will be. But, I mean, I heard you say that we, this is a very short timeline for public input. So can the public input be extended until March third?
No, unfortunately, we, we've looked at that. We did have an extended budget engagement in, in September. And the direction that we see recently resulted in a compressed schedule. So now we're, we're just working on mandatory timelines. We, we have to follow this schedule.
But.
To, just to clarify, earlier on I asked if, if it could slip from the twenty fourth meeting to the March third meeting. And I thought the answer I got back was that that wouldn't significantly impact it.
No, it, but staff does need some time to compile the summary to get that report. There's a report on public input that the staff prepares for council for the March tenth deliberations meeting. So it, it's a very tight schedule as it is.
So again, what would happen on March third?
At this point, nothing, it's, it's currently in the plan for, for February twenty fourth. I'm going to work with staff to see if that meeting is overloaded. And if so, we may move some things to the March third meeting. Just because I, this is an important item, I don't want it on an overloaded agenda. So, but I'm going to have to work with staff on that.
Yeah, so I'm failing to understand why, if, if we move that date, why we couldn't move the public input date. So we give the public a bit more of an opportunity.
What, what, it's a good question. What normally happens is after the public input period, there's a final stage where people are allowed to come to the chamber and speak directly to council.
Yeah.
Following that meeting, the, the staff will prepare a summary of all that input. So it does take a little bit of time to do that. That's why the, the gap between the public input period and council deliberations.
But don't we have that? Don't we have that gap from March third to March tenth? If we cut it off at March third and didn't come back till March tenth, would that be enough time?
Does it take two weeks to compile the public input? Is that something we can compress down to one week? I think is the question. Probably, probably not to have it printed for the following Wednesday, which would mean you'd only have three business days. That would only give them one business day to actually, yeah. So. Work with staff on it. We'll, we'll, we'll try to get something reasonable out of that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Here's the opportunity for the community to communicate with us in any way. This is going to be online.
Yes.
They'll be able to view it. We've always done lots of outreach to the community.
Yep.
You know.
We'll also be visiting with the community associations.
They can email us. Yeah, Rick meets with the community association, so staff does, so.
Just clarifying, Counselor Pope, you have the floor. Are you finished with your comments?
For the moment, yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mayor, did you have additional comments? Okay, I see no further speakers at this time. It's been moved and seconded, prepared to call the question, all in favor, contrary minded, motion is carried. Thank you. Looking forward to digging through this and probably have some questions for you along the way. Thank you. We have completed the business of the regular meeting of, of the special meeting of council. But I will just check, are there any reports that anybody would like to make? I'll check with Mr. Stewart, the CAO, do you have any reports to make at this time?
Your worship, the only comment that I would make, if council has questions about the budget, please don't wait till the council meeting. Please, please direct them at staff so we can try to provide the answers to you in advance so that you can focus on the things that are most important to you as opposed to a whole bunch of questions which we then have to get delayed on in terms of, of, of moving the process forward. So I, I would just encourage you to ask any questions you have of, of Rick or Peter or any of the senior management staff. So that we can answer your questions before you get into the next sort of stage of this process.
Well said. Thank you for reminding us of that, Mr. Stewart. Okay, I don't have any reports. I don't see any reports coming up from councils. Oh, Counselor back?
I just wanted to remark on my attendance at Manova on last Friday evening for the opening of their new exhibit. It's called Echoes of Memory and it's, it talks about, talks about the museum's role largely with regards to dementia and memory loss. It's quite an interesting, interesting topic. And there was a really good turnout for that event. So this is an exhibit that's on until June at Manova and lots of good, just local connections to this topic of, of memory loss. So I encourage everyone to check it out.
Thank you. Counselor Mary?
I, Betty's ringing off the hook here. I had the pleasure of attending Adrian Carr, Counselor Adrian Carr's farewell event on Friday. And it was a very well attended support. Berman was there. Paul George of Western Canada Wilderness Committee is, is Adrian's partner. And it was a, it was a great event and it's, it's poignant for the district because Paul George, who ran WC squared, Western Canada Wilderness Committee for many years. He was the director of the Wilderness Committee. He did a paper for us in nineteen ninety six for Cove Mountain Forest. And the campaigner that worked on that event, Nick Cuff, was also there. And Lynn Tietzel, who is a resident up in Edgemont, she was also in attendance. She was a former professor at Cap U. She taught, she taught local government and actually many of our clerks took the program with Lynn at Cap U. And I, I had spoken at the university a few times over the years for local government, but you know, I think we owe a, a great debt to Paul George, but also Adrian Carr for supporting him through that work. Because that paper that we had to actually convince him to do because it was an urban lobby, it wasn't sort of a backcountry lobby. He wasn't convinced that it was a good, a good use of his resources. And, but we pushed him and finally he gave in. And it turned out to be the biggest campaign drive that the Wilderness Committee had ever had. You know, they had done papers in Clackwat Sound, support Berman. And, but the, the district came out very strong and supported the membership in order to support obviously the work of the Wilderness Committee and these papers that had aerial photographs of Cove Mountain Forest. And I still have copies at home. But it was a very good night. She's, you know, there's a by-election, Christine Boyle, who's the new NDP MLA in Vancouver. And, and now her stepping down in midterm will, will trigger a by-election. But she certainly worked hard for the environment in this region and her partner worked very hard for the environment. And we've been, you know, we've, we've been the benefactors of that work for the protection of Cove Mountain Forest. So it was a very nice event, very nice. And I wish her well. And I'm sure she'll be somewhere around, you know, saving the climate on her own. So, thank you.
Well, it's a very important piece of our history and I hope that it's not lost. It's something we should document and make sure is out there because the district of North Vancouver actually went to Supreme Court of Canada over that issue because the federal government felt that their agencies shouldn't be subject to municipal bylaws and, and, and municipal plans. And the district of North Vancouver fought them. And so CMHC was not able to do what it wanted to do. And as a result, you have the beautiful forested character of the Quarry Rock Trail that thousands and thousands of people walk on a single summer day.
Yeah.
So it's.
Our little group too, in addition to that, our little group was named in that lawsuit. And we immediately had a local Greg McDade, Ratcliffe, former Ratcliffe King's Council attorney step up and say that he would represent us if it ever got to the point where, you know, we were going to have to argue for ourselves. Luckily it didn't and the district was successful. But yeah, it was the good old days of grassroots democracy. And, you know, we didn't have petitions on change.org. We had a clipboard with a piece of paper and a pen and people walking door to door knocking. And it was, you know, it was the, it was a great part of activism back then. It was good.
Thank you for your report. I don't see any other reports or, okay, so we've completed the business of the special meeting and prepared to accept adjournment. Accepted. Thank you very much. Thank you to the staff who prepared our reports for our consideration this evening. And thank you, members of the public, for coming and asking your questions today. And thank you to council for taking time to deliberate on these important issues. Everybody have a fantastic evening. Good night.